I would like to welcome everybody to the monthly school board meeting, October 17, 2017. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brian Giesi.
Present.
Nicholas Huesa.
Present.
Dave Schmidt.
Yes.
Ryan Mahon. And I am present.
And pledge of allegiance, please, for those that can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a virtue card reading.
All right, we are going with kindness. Kindness is showing you care, doing some good to make life better for others. Be thoughtful about people's needs. Show love and compassion to someone who is sad or needs your help. When you are tempted to be cruel, to criticize or tease, decide to be kind instead. You are practicing kindness when you give tender attention to those who need help, do thoughtful things to give others happiness, practice habits that help the environment, resist the temptation to be cruel, accept people who are different. Affirmation: I am kind. I show compassion to others. I have the courage to show I care.
Thank you, Pat. Good virtue. Board of Education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Those are the Board of Education guidelines. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to any public comments. Any comments out there? Okay, just checking. I like your suggestion. Okay, no comments. At this point, we'll move on to showcasing our schools and student learning. We have the great opportunity to hear from Kayla Gaffney and advisory students speaking about the kindness campaign. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to you, and thank you very much for being here.
For this year's theme, we're obviously doing kindness, and we were watching the kindness diaries. We're doing a hurricane relief effort for the Florida thing.
Do you want to talk about how we decided to do this?
While we were watching the kindness diary.
What were we going to do first?
I think we're going to do a homeless shelter idea.
And then we came together as an advisory, and after all the hurricanes, we decided that we were going to collect some items for one of the hurricanes. So as an advisory, we voted on, do we want to send it to Texas and then Florida?
It starts November 1st and ends on the 30th. The donations are being accepted at appropriate times during the school day, like after school, before school, recess.
The fundraiser instructions are just, the students will put donations in a box at the end of their wing, which of course we will provide. Several eighth graders will be present to each grade level in the coming weeks with more information, so we'll present to the grades individually as groups. Well, we'll go to them as groups. And the fundraiser is a competition between grade levels, so whichever grade level gives the most items, they'll win some sort of prize, but we haven't decided on what yet. We have a list of items. It's more extensive than this, but we narrowed it down to the most important items. The money is greatly appreciated, but items are preferred. The list of things includes paper towels, cleaning supplies, which would include disinfectant wipes, Ziploc baggies, and baby wipes, powder, diapers, and children's books. For any questions, you can contact Ms. Gaffney or her advisory students at Kayla Gaffney at Nacousa, K-12, Wisconsin, or the 7th grade hallway.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, very much.
Before we end there, would you introduce yourselves?
I'm Deskee Peterson.
I'm Rhianna Dye.
I have one question. You said on the items, you said children's books?
Yes.
Is that new, used, or either?
It could be either, as long as they're logical.
In good shape?
Yes.
Okay.
And what grade levels are you going to be collecting funds from?
Well, we'll do just the middle school, so that would be 4 through 8.
Fantastic.
Are you going to include STEM in that, too?
Yes.
Okay. Are the STEMs going to be separate, I would imagine?
I'm guessing.
Okay.
We haven't really discussed it.
Okay.
On the kindness campaign, what inspired you to go along those lines of the kindness campaign?
Well, Ms. Gaffney has kind of always been obsessed with kindness.
Obsessed.
I like that.
She kind of pushed us towards it, but we did do it voluntarily.
Okay. And what things, do you do anything on a daily basis with regards to this kindness?
Well, last year, she had a box where we could write down things we did today, just normal things that were kind, and put them in there. She put a label on it, said Random Acts of Kindness. I don't know if she still has that, but she still encourages us to do stuff like that every day, reminds us every day.
Nice. And so you've been watching the kindness diaries?
We've seen the first episode.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, we only got through the first episode, but throughout the year, we'll watch the whole series.
Fantastic. And so that, just to be specific, the items will be collected from November 1st through
The 30th.
The 30th.
Yep.
And that can be dropped off, you know, for people, if there's persons in the public wishing to drop off?
Yes.
They should direct it towards the office and then get it to the middle school office and then get it to Ms. Gaffney. Okay.
Awesome. And so that goes for the board, too, right?
The board and our public, you know. Some very, you know, those hurricane victims need some help, and so that's a great, great project.
You know, I just want to commend the students and Ms. Gaffney on that unity that had been created so early on in the year in that advisory and working towards such a purposeful and challenging venture such as this. You know, in our conversations with Ms. Gaffney, I thought, you know, that's really something that we should share out and an opportunity for you guys to also get some more donations. So congratulations to you guys.
So, Mr. Rogers, maybe once again, for our viewing public, what should they do if they want to donate?
Oh, well, you could donate by stopping by this AMS school before or after school. Also, send it with your students, if you have students in the school, or call our school office, and we can arrange how you can get it there.
And we do have a flyer that Nathan Swenson made, and Brandon Swenson did the PowerPoint as well. So it's really exciting. Like, I came up with the idea of, hey, let's do something kind, and we thought of the hurricanes. And my whole advisory, I mean, they're just, they're taking control of it. They're doing the flyers, they're doing the PowerPoint. I came up with what we should have for committees, and then they put themselves in the committees, and they're just rolling with it, and it's really fun to watch.
Excellent.
So how do you get that done in 18 minutes a day?
We just get started right away, and we do lunch count and attendance down at Grab and Go, so right when we get back, we have from like 1:45 until 8:10, and we're busy right when we get on the door, right on task.
Sometimes we stay after school to tell.
Yes, there's a lot of kids who stay after school during early release time, they have to come down, or during lunch sometimes, too. So we've really created this great community.
Awesome.
Would something that, something, some of the written materials be appropriate for the Facebook page?
Oh, sure.
That might extend your exposure.
Reach, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, make sure you thank your fellow advisory students when you get back for the work that they're doing to spread kindness around the world. This should be shared with our friend Leon, too, this project. There's got to be one of those postcards floating around, we could send them a little note.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good, there you go. You've done it times 20. Thank you.
The ground of applause. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much for being here.
CWSA update. I was able to attend the CWSA meeting last evening, and you know, there's a new board at CWSA, and to observe the new board and how they operate, the structure, the, that the new president was a good, it was good for me to see that in action. A lot of times, you know, I reflect upon what we do here, and watching somebody else do similar functions, it's like, kind of, you know, you see different things. So I would encourage all board members to try to make it to those meetings if and when you can. But just as an update, there's just a couple different things. The, they have some soap that they made. One of their projects, they made some soap, and they are, the soap is actually being sold. And we have a, there's a, what do you call a person that tells a little bit about the product and how they like it?
Spokesperson?
The spokesperson is this guy right here. Terry, you want to say anything about the soap?
Well, it's great soap. I actually got a couple of bars last year from one of our community events, and so when I found out they had soap for sale, I bought five bars. It's great soap. So if you're interested, you need to show up at AMS and visit CWSA and get your bars of soap.
They're currently, I believe, at 32 students right now. One of the things that they're working on, and it's something that is important to them, is doing a, developing an exit interview for students that may leave that program, that they want to create a process for the parent and student to discuss and talk about the reasons why that might happen. And it's something that's ongoing, but they were kind of excited about that process. They have a STEM exploration for the 7th, 8th grade boys coming up that they may be going to, and that's exciting. On the fundraising side, they've done a great deal of work, and Beth Thomas has developed a number of ideas. They do have the ability to do their own fundraising, so they're taking full advantage of that. So that's kind of an update of where they are. Their next meeting date is 11:20 at 4:00 PM. And they do have some upcoming showcases, I don't know if you know those dates?
I don't know.
Okay. They're looking forward to that. But good meeting. Any questions that I might fail to answer about CWSA? Or anything you want to mention about CWSA?
Actually, November 9th is the next one.
November 9th.
November 9th. Showcase, at what time? Got it.
Okay. Communicating with the board, is that student available?
Yep, Nicholas.
Oh, I'm sorry. Update.
Here he is.
Here we go. Update from Nicholas Kniprath, student representative.
No problem. So just going over something we did this past month, really, we had a penny war going on to support hurricane relief victims. The money that we raised went to Americare's, and we raised over $1,200. I don't have the exact total, but it was just about $1,200. That money went to Americare's, they take about 3% of that. 3% from, for administrative values, the rest of it all goes to the actual people that need help. So that goes directly toward hurricane relief efforts. And then we pied teachers at advisory during advisory, and Mr. Johnson got pied.
To help raise money?
It was for the winning advisory, so whichever advisory raised the most money got to pied a staff member.
See, I think that sounds to me like something that should be done more often to raise money.
Both board members are involved.
I was told there's a possibility of getting pied.
Actually, I would like to publicly say that, you know. The next time that this happens, if we get some of the administrators involved, I-
And board members?
Well, I was going to be writing the check.
Keith was there.
Anyway, go ahead, thank you.
So aside from the penny war, that ended previous to homecoming week, it just became part of our advisory activities during the week. And speaking of homecoming, we finished with, I think the week went really well. The pep rally went well, the dance went well, football game went well, powder puff went well. I don't think there was anything that we really had an issue with. The spirit week, we had great participation. I think it's the highest I've seen it, being in student council these four years at the high school, so it was really cool to see the seniors won participation by about three points with the freshmen right in tow. So it was really cool to see the freshmen participating a lot as well. And then moving forward, we're looking to do Nacousa's got to, we announced that at the pep rally, and there's posters up around the town now. We have the audition days of November 29th, which is a Wednesday night, and then on a Saturday morning, which is December 2nd. And then the live show is on December 16th. So we're digging the top 20 acts, and they have a five-minute limit, and we're going to use any money raised from that to go toward Americare's as well. School beautification's another thing we're working on. We'd like to see the murals in the school maybe redone in the upper hallway there. The one that's the most recent is from '98, so we'd like to get those a little bit more new up there for the students. So that's what we're working on right now. Any questions?
Just, I think, from the homecoming week, I think just the amount of planning and time that went into it, things went off the hutch, and a lot of people already be congratulated with that, so.
And Nick is a big, 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 big part of that, as student council president. It really has become almost entirely student council run weekend. Making student council president did the lion's share of a lot of the work around it, so.
Good job.
Nice work.
Good job.
Great experience, huh? Awesome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kniprath. We very much appreciate your input and time. At this point, regarding other board work, 2017 summer school report. This is information only.
Well, thank you. I am passing on a green sheet of paper that was donated by Don Tarr, so we want to thank them for that, first of all. So, and, but right now, as that circulates the room, I'm passing out, just kind of as a point of reference for individuals. I like numbers, and I just kind of like to have some analytics to look at and stuff. So what I put together is kind of just a quick glance of some summer things. A little, just a couple of paragraphs at the top, and to highlight that right there, I'll just say this. This past year, we took it upon ourselves to kind of put a little more energy into summer school and kind of give it a little bit more of a, okay, let's kind of give it a little more energy and a little bit of a facelift and try to draw on some more interest. And so down below, I highlighted that, you know, the number of courses we offered and the number of courses that ended up going forward, we had a good mix, a good balance there of the courses that we offered. We're still looking to try and target more of the older kids and get them involved in some academic things, and I know each one of our principals came forward with some ideas. Some of them didn't take off, just for whatever reason or not, but we're continuing to look at that to try and reach out to more kids to try and find things that interest them. Some of them are the traditional academic nature, some of it just of exploratories and camps and clinics and other things like that. Our traditional summer school is an 18-day period that we have in July, but our summer school really is all summer. So whenever an individual is getting together and doing something, it might not occur during that time, so we try to reach out to everybody to really just create a unique learning opportunity to enrich children. One of the things I included in the report then is just, you know, where are our courses being held, and then who, and who's teaching them? So I could put a little table together like that, that was just me being curious. And one of the things that we started throwing around this past year is, you know, looking at how we organize and where we hold summer school classes, just kind of looking at some of the things that we've done right now. That's something that I think we'll explore a little bit more in the future in terms of where the, where those classes all occur. Something else that I just was curious about again was the total number of students participating. We did have 292, that's up slightly from the previous year. Then I was curious really about the number of students who participated in the elementary classroom experiences that occurred in that traditional 18-day period in July, so it kind of gives you a breakdown of how many kids were present, or I'm going to say who participated in the average daily attendance for each one of those classes, and those are just some numbers that I just wanted to look at and be aware of. Then Lynn was kind enough to provide an expense right now. The total expenses that we had this previous summer school experiences, which is part of this budget year, $61,000, and the revenue that we received from that was just slightly less than $50,000, and so there was a shortfall of $11,000 to make summer school happen. And that's one of the things that we did with the efforts to work with our summer school this past year, too, was try to curtail the expenses, and we were able to do that, so you know, I'm happy to report that, but you know, like Lynn, we want to finish in the black. So we're working to figure out how to do that and be creative and still meet the needs of children, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And just a side note, we have never, ever run summer school in the black. It's virtually impossible when you provide busing. And not that I'm promoting that we terminate the busing, because I think our summer school program is a great program, and $11,000, I think, is a very small price to pay in order to offer such a great program.
Yeah, and then look back at the old numbers, and that's the cheapest we've been able to do in like the last six years.
That is correct.
So where does the shortfall come from? Is that from unbalanced?
Yes, that is correct.
You know, it's great the numbers looked up, and it looks like, you know, the YMCA had a large number of students, and their average daily attendance, they had handled quite a bit of tests.
They do, and they could still take more. And last year, one of the things we said, well, let's change the experience to try and create like a middle school experience and do something a little bit different. It didn't grab hold and take off like we hoped. So, but we're still playing around, but the K5, you know, element is still very good. We get good participation, but again, like I said, we could still get more.
And that early childhood and 4K is probably still an underutilized.
It is, and you know, just to provide a little insight on that, our 4K experience, because the kids are really, this is, for some of them, this is their first taste of school, so it's kind of like, okay, you know, depending upon where they're coming from. So some of those kids, you know, being there just a couple hours, that's what we have, like a two-hour, two-and-a-half hour session in the morning, and then we run like a three-hour session around the lunch. And so for them, those numbers, that is a little bit lower, but right now, sometimes it's hard to get those kids in in the middle of the day when they're dealing with logistics of transportation, daycare gear. So a lot of those kids, we were able to partner with through the YMCA and have the kids come from the YMCA to come into our program to get educational services.
Fantastic.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. Good efforts. This is a fun one. Third Friday in September count update and September count comparison. Ms. Lynn?
On the screen and in your packet is just a synopsis of what happened with the Third Friday Count. Twice a year, DPI requires us to count students, and the September count is probably the most important count because our state aid is determined on that number. So what I've done for you is I took Table 1, which is enrollment by grade, and those are all kids in seats and virtual. So, and I broke it out by grade, so you can see what, how many students were in seats in September of 2016 versus September 2017. And we had a pretty big drop of 54 students in seats. You convert those numbers into Table 2, which is a total membership. And membership is, we have kids in seats, some of those kids aren't our residents, they transferred in from other school districts. On the same token, some of our residents transferred out to other school districts. So what this table does is it grabs all of the residents that transferred out and decreases all of the students that transferred in that are not our residents. So the total membership is the resident students that are attending school. We always like to look at our open enrolled in and our agreements to see if the students coming in are more than the students going out. Now, when you strictly look at open enrollment, and this, I'm looking at September 2017, the students that are coming in are 85, we have 85 students coming in from other districts. But the students going out is 108. So students that are our residents are choosing to go someplace else. But if you add in the 66030 agreements, those are the virtual students and the 4K students that we have an agreement with Port Edwards and Wisconsin Rapids. These are students that have chosen to come here, but not under the open enrollment program. So in total, the students coming in is 135 versus the students going out, which is 112. And if that's one positive thing that we can look at from this table, that's something that we should hang on to. So that just solidifies in my mind that we need to continue our virtual program and maybe think about opening up that virtual charter school, because if we have a virtual charter school, the districts that don't want to play with us in a 66030 agreement won't have a choice, because those students will open enroll into our charter school. So it's really beneficial that we, that we can grab some of the students that we couldn't in the past. So then we take that number, and we go to Table 3. Table 3 is taking the membership and converting it to full-time equivalencies, which is used in the revenue limit worksheet and the state aid, state aid formula. So for example, the preschool, we have five. The factor that DPI uses for a full-time equivalency is .5. So those five student, five membership students turn into three FTEs, which is a decrease, it shouldn't be a decrease of, it should be the same. The four-year-old kindergarten has a factor of .6. So those 63 students turn into 38. And the five-year-old kindergarten and the grades 1 through 12 have a factor of 1. So the 85 and the 1,004 maintain the 85 or 1,004. So when you look at the total Third Friday Count FTEs, last year we had 1,163, and this year we have 1,130, which is a decrease of 34 FTEs. So then, if we go on to summer, summer school, which is Table 4, and John gave a really nice presentation on summer school. Like he said, we had a little uptick in our students, we had a 19 student increase. That converted into 19 FTEs according to the state formula, which is the same as last year, which converted again into the, what, the revenue limit FTEs that is used for our revenue limit worksheet to eight, and that did not change. So as you can see, we have some work to do.
Some positive things that are, you know. We, you know, declining enrollment is something that is very difficult, you know, for our district to absorb those losses, and we need to, you know, we're going to be working on developing strategies to get that number up.
That's just for information.
Yep, and I, we thank you again on any questions, anybody on the counts. We had our annual meeting earlier, and in that annual meeting, we approved the 2018, 2018 tax levy approval. And at this point, we need to, in our regular board meeting- And at this point, we need to, in, in our regular board meeting, the board president and myself calls for a motion that the sum of ten million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred dollars be levied and assessed against all taxable property of the school district of Nacusa to pay the expenses of the school district for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year and that set amount be placed in the general fund, debt service fund and community service fund as budgeted. Motion on the floor.
Make that motion. Second.
Uh, roll call vote please.
Doug Houston.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
Brian Mahon.
Yes.
I vote yes. Brian Gizi.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, two thousand, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I'm calling for a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget as presented.
One more.
Second.
Roll call vote please, please.
Doug Houston.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
Brian Mahon. I vote yes. Brian Gizi.
Health insurance purchasing cooperative. The board president and myself is calling for a motion for the school district of Nacusa to become a member of a cooperative created pursuant to section one eighty-five point nine-nine of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of implementing an agreement to cooperatively purchase health insurance and other optional lines of insurance coverage. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes the district to participate in an intergovernmental agreement of the proposed cooperative known as the Central Wisconsin Area Schools Benefits Insurance Purchasing Cooperative pursuant to the terms of the cooperative's organizational documents. Motion on the floor. Any questions? Roll call vote please.
Doug Houston.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
Brian Mahon.
Yes.
I vote yes. Brian Gizi.
Yes. And just as a note, you know, this, the hard work that went into, um, developing this, this cooperative has, has given the district of Nacusa benefits, um, and made us stronger in the health insurance market. So I'd like to congratulate Lynn for the work that she's done.
Thank you, Lynn. And Rick, right?
Did you want me to talk about the promises? Did you want me to talk about the promises?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and Rick Sutherland. He was a big part of this, so, um, when, we did meet with the twelve other districts or the eleven other districts and went over the bylaws and everything. What was a surprise to us, and the attorney was there as well. What was a surprise to us is when the attorney stated that every school district would have to come up with, um, a, basically a check for a full month health insurance premium to be held in case we reneged on our, um, agreement. And every jaw dropped because that's about two hundred thousand dollars that we would have to come up with that comes, comes right out of our capital. And so, uh, after the meeting, after the attorney informed us of it, after the meeting, we talked to our insurance consultant and we said, no, we're not doing that. None of us can afford this. So, um, we talked with, uh, Peewaqui School District that had their first, was the first co-op of the state and they, um, actually developed a promissory note so nobody would have to come up with a, a check to give or to be held in case we reneged on our, on our agreement. They came up with a promissory note that only went into effect if you violated the agreement. And I said, that's what we're doing. So I actually needed another motion to approve the promissory.
I'm going to call for a motion to enter into a promissory note in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay a capitalization fee to the Central Wisconsin Area Schools Benefits Insurance Purchasing Cooperative.
So move.
We have a motion.
I'll make a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Lynn. Employee handbook. The employee handbook was part of our board packet. At this time, I'm calling for a motion to approve the employee handbook as presented.
And it's been updated with our attorney, so there's some, the addition, additional comments or suggestions that he recommended are in there. Plus we removed a section that's in our policies.
That removal was just to keep us in line?
Yep, just to keep us, make sure that it's fresh and current with the law.
And those areas that are changed have been noted.
Correct.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve the employee handbook. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Youth options. Uh, Keith, you want to say?
Yep, um, we had the, the applications for the two youth options. They are both just continuing from, um, courses that they're taking this semester. We don't have any courses that would be similar to what they're doing. They're actually, um, they're, they're high local classes and so the recommendation is to approve those. And I also have course options, one that we got the other day that I would like to slip in. This one is for a student at the academy to take a CNA course at midstate next semester. Again, we don't have anything, she is a graduate and senior. Working with midstate on the possibility of having a CNA course, um, available for students at the high school as kind of an evening course, but, um, we don't have that much of that on the school. So I would ask for approval on the two youth options and the one course option.
Very good. You, you know, just for those that aren't aware, the youth options are for those students that are looking for classes that we as a district cannot provide. And this allows those students to take those advanced courses and it's again, a great benefit to the students and they should be, they should be commended for this work that they're, they're looking at doing. So motion on the floor to approve the youth options applications with UW Colleges online, what's that?
UW Colleges.
UW Colleges online, um, do we need their names?
I can.
Very good.
They're in already.
And then, and Maxwell Lovin and Gregory Mathias and.
The call.
Very good. Second? Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Keith. Governance policy. We are looking for approval of Board District Administrator Relations BSR four, delegation of authority to district administrator. This policy deals with, you know, the, the fact that we as a board delegate the authority to the district administrator and the interpretation of this policy is the board will govern through results, policies and operational expectations. Also, the board will respect any reasonable interpretation of its policies by the district administrator. And that's a, that's a pretty strong statement. And, and with the policy governance model, this is, this is one of the strengths of that. Um, and we as a board are responsible for, you know, developing and, and monitoring those policies and operational expectations. All board members and district administrator were contacted via email and asked to respond with any, any potential violations. There were no reported potential violations. So at this time, I am looking for a motion to approve the, uh, board policy, Board District Administrator Relations B dash SR four.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. I'd like to read off the donations and unless you'd like to speak about anything with regards to those.
Uh, we had Katie Peters, our family partnership coordinator, has resigned, um, as you read in the email from her. She, you know, the original position was all encompassing and had her, I think, moving around a lot. And over time, we really narrowed in and focused in on, uh, early learning and it was, you know, that wasn't, if she wants to move on, I think, and look for something that's more in line with what the job originally entailed. So, but we thank her for her service. We thank her for her time.
And I'd like to read the donations. Cliff Hudson through Choose to Reuse donated one large bag of playground balls and several bats to AMS. The backpack for kids, we received one hundred and twenty-five dollars from the Fifty-One HCE Club, twenty dollars from Sacred Heart Collections, two hundred and fifty dollars from Lake Arrowhead and fifty dollars from Steve and Judy Brennich. Um, so Mr. Cliff Hudson and the others, thank you very much for these donations. They, they help out our families and, and kids more than words can describe. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One more.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Future meetings and agenda items. Um, October twenty-sixth, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Regional Meeting at the Holiday Inn, um, up in Rothschild at six to nine P M. We really try to get the whole board there.
Dana, do we have everybody? The whole board's going to be there, right?
They're all signed up.
So we should work on some carpooling.
Remember that rides with Terry prepared to be scrapped now.
Well.
I'll tell myself.
I'll go with Terry.
Yeah. So we should probably leave here at what? It's about an hour?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's longer than that.
So.
Well, yeah.
From here?
It's about an hour?
Yeah.
So let's plan on leaving here at five then, huh? If you want to ride the van? Four forty-five?
Rocking the school van?
Yeah. Especially riding with me, right? Four forty-five?
I'll get us a photo.
Yeah. So the van will leave here, is that fair? Who's going to ride? So be Dave, Doug, you'll probably meet us up there from work?
Right.
So Dave, Pat?
Yep, I'm right.
So it'll be the three of us?
No.
Okay. Well, you know what that bus leaves. All right.
Are you on the bus? Very good. October thirtieth, um, six to seven P M, building, sale team presentations.
Why don't we have one of our principals just give a little taste of that? Because that's going to be a big deal.
This meeting was originally scheduled for last week, but we moved it to a homecoming.
So what are they going to get? What's the board going to get that night?
I'll just give a little, you know, we, each of us as an individual building principals have what is called a sale team. That might be some part of a leadership team that we already have. And we'll bring those individuals forward and talk about work that we've been working on towards a really, um, creating a level of collaboration and helping to step, you know, with our teachers to help drive us to, towards a vision. So the building leadership team is taking on a role to help in terms of just being collaborative and guiding us to the vision that we've been working at in the demo. Anything else you want to add?
Nick, you're a part of the.
Well, he's part of the sale team, that's right. So really, please, please, please try to make it for that because we're really wanting, and we're, not only are we excited about you hearing about it, but each team will hear from the other teams because they haven't really done a check-in since they were gone this summer, right? Uh, because all three sale teams were down in the Dells studying and learning and so this would be a chance to, for them to learn from each other and what's going on at each school. So that'll be an exciting meeting. Sorry, Brian.
I'm looking forward to it. November ninth, um, this meeting is an important meeting, um, strategic planning input workshop. Um, the district is working on its strategic plan. Um, I, I don't know if you've been, have you guys received this?
What's in the annual meeting packet?
The annual meeting packet. Um, but, you know, this is something that administration, Terry, um, have, have worked on. And what the intent is with the strategic planning is that in, you know, remember in past years, when we take this, you know, we, we got together in groups and we took this out and, and worked with teachers and worked with members of the public to get input into our strategic plan. And what we're going to be doing is using the board of it. I had some concerns on how this would fall because we're going to be responsible as board members for directing these meetings. Um, this is essentially going to, it's going to, I'm not going to call it a listening session, but for the purposes of this quarter, this is going to be what we're doing as a board and we're all going to need to be involved. But what we're going to be doing is directing these meetings and with a, with an administrator most likely. And there are some questions, which is in the board packet too.
Uh, no, not yet.
Very good. They're, they're working on some, some questions and guidelines and what they're going to do is use this, the board of education as, what do you call that?
A pilot.
A pilot or a something goat.
Billy goat. Billy, a guinea pig.
Guinea pig.
Billy goat.
I was close on it. But, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, that we fine tune this process because when we take it out to the public, um, or, you know, the interest party, teachers, that, that we are able to speak with the same voice and, and receive information that can be gathered together and, and, you know, bring it back to this document here and update it if necessary. You know, there may be different views out there within our community and, you know, we, we have, we have our own, you know, the minister, Terry and, and their team have a, have an idea of what their commitments should be, but we also have to identify what our stakeholders in our community want.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if what we want and what our stakeholders want don't match, we need to address that within the strategic plan. And so this is a really important opportunity to get that matched, you know, with what does our community want? What do our stakeholders want from the district and their, and their strategic plan in moving forward? Um, and, and, you know, we had a, we had a plan that, that was fairly aggressive. Um, it's been, you know, it's one of the things that brought Terry to our district and, and where he saw that there was a plan in place and, and we've been following it. But, you know, all things, it's a living document and it needs to change. Um, so that's an important meeting, guys, and, um, coming up very quickly.
So if I could just add, so the plan is, can I add just one, just a little bit? So this document then will drive the conversation. So those questions will help us get input from our stakeholders about what they see as priorities and what they value about the experience that we're providing. But we're also pulling in, uh, data from report cards. So I see this as a strong linkage. You know, we've talked about linkages. So we'll pull in report card data, forward exams, you know, we're going to, the, the culture surveys. all the surveys we do. And really, we, we make decisions then based on all of this collected data. And so our hope is to get to each school and really have our, our staff and parents fully understand this, why we're doing what we're doing. And then running them through the series of questions so that we can really vet out priorities and, you know, what our community values. So, it'll be a probably, you know, we're looking at probably having six forty-five minute sessions across the district after the board goes through the, the bill, the first billy goat. You're supposed to chuckle.
We're coming up to some hard work as a team. And that brings us to the next meeting, the November sixteenth meeting, which is a board workshop. And this is dealing with policy governance. There's also, you know, we as a board and, and I, you know, we, we haven't been able to meet as a team in quite, in quite some time since our last retreat, or advance, I should say, our last advance.
Mm-hmm, advance.
So, this workshop on the sixteenth, we want to, we want to make that one.
Well, and we're going to, and we're going to have some, you know, quite a few policies next month, so we'll need it.
We've got a town quick.
We do?
Yeah. That's seed day.
That's seed day?
That is seed day.
So we need to come up with a new seed day? The sixteenth was seeded?
The sixteenth is seeded. I know it because it's the day before the opening weekend of deer season. And the twenty-first is deer season.
New year deer.
All right, so we'll have to, we'll work on that.
We'll have to work on that.
We'll have to work on that date.
For seed.
Well, both of them, if you could. Problem we got is we're, we're jamming a lot of things into the Thursdays preceding, I mean, I don't, you know, the ninth is, that's a Thursday, I believe. Sixteenth is a Thursday.
Let's go for the Tuesday before. Let's go for the, let's go for Tuesday, the fourteenth.
For the workshop?
Yes.
Am I? Well, we'll have Diana, or do you want to do it now, or do you want to? Does the fourteenth work for people? That's the second Tuesday.
My gosh, you're going to have, well, how many deer you need? Once you get two or three, you're good to go. Get home and get back to work.
Well, you know, I go off the grid too. I mean, my phone won't even work where I'm at.
Yep, it's, it's understandable, things come up. Well, ladies and gentlemen, a lot of work has been accomplished tonight. We have a lot of work to do. The school year, you know, is, is set in motion. We're through homecoming. But we really, we need to get our hands dirty here over the next couple of months. And time flies by so fast, so. And I, you know, I myself need to really invest some more time and, and working on the things that I need to and working together with, with you as a team, so. Brian Mahon, you're being quite patient.
Waiting for my motion.
Oh, Mr. Goozy, can I interject one last?
Yes, 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 yes.
Just an announcement for our viewing public. We are, this upcoming Monday, on the twenty-third, we are holding an open house, well, an overview of the new math curriculum that is happening for grades six through nine. We've sent out alert nows and for parent square invitations to these. But for community members who have students who are in grades six through nine, there is a new math curriculum that is in place. And we wanted to be able to give some idea of here's what it looks like. We have some people from, it's called CPM Math or College Preparatory Math. We have some, a trainer who's going to be in town to be able to demonstrate and answer some questions. And we'd like to invite people to come out. We're having a dinner at five thirty. We're having the meeting from six to six forty-five. And then there's a band concert that night at seven o'clock, so.
And enquirer.
And choir, so pulling all that together for a, for an evening that comes to those. If people have any questions, please be in contact with me. We'll also continue to send out invitations, but just taking the opportunity that we have.
What day again?
This is Monday, October twenty-third.
Good. All right.
Did we decide that October or November?
We're, we're going to have Diana sort through it.
She's going to figure it'll get back to us.
Is that fair, Diana, or is it better to do it right now?
It's fine.
Fourteenth? That, that'd be.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll have to change the six, the date of the sixteen, right?
Correct. And that really only needs to be the board. That's just the board, so I don't think we need to worry. That's, that's the board only.
Well, and Nathan. Nathan needs to be there for the E.L.A. results too, yeah.
Nathan, but the rest of the folks, that's, you know, don't worry.
Brian, that means you're here though.
And we want to thank your wife for letting you be here. Kara, we thank you for, for letting Brian be here. And, and all other family members as well. Dave. Doug, Dave, Pat. So, Brian?
I make the motion for adjourned.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Time?